All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. You can all stand and girls, can I get you all to start it please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which is we have one nation under God. We live in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the moment of silence. This is your opportunity to, if there's somebody you want to lift up to, to let me know. Anybody?
We can lift up the Sidler family who had to put down their dog Archie.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, all right, if we can just bow our head for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. Council, you all received copies of the April 10th Town Council Meeting summary and the meeting minutes. I believe when we saw two responses from Nate and Connor that they didn't see anything. So I'm assuming everybody, are we good? So if we can get a motion for the approval of the April 10th meeting minutes.
I moved that we approved the meeting minutes from April 10.
Is there a second?
Hi, second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay. I'm sorry, I failed to mention that Councilmember Nate Ingle is on a business trip. He's in Africa, so he's not even in a really good time zone to be joining us. So, so that's why Nate's not here tonight. So he will be back for the June meeting. Okay, so let's keep going down town. The announcements for the June 5th town election. The certificate of nominations.
I hit the wrong button.
Oh. The certificate of nominations was due by 4:00 PM today. At four o'clock, the only two declared candidates were Councilmember Bartram and Councilmember, excuse me, Primmens. So per the ordinance that we put in, what, two years ago? We will not have an election. If it's uncontested, we don't hold an election. So since we, but instead of an election, we had talked about the possibility. Typically, we do a meet and greet. So we like the idea of having a part of voting in person in the town is that act of community. So we still plan to meet. I think it starts at six o'clock and we'll have an ice cream truck there for everyone to have some ice cream and to meet and greet and thank our two council members who are stepping up to the plate and putting in another two years on the council. So we'll send out more information on that. And also, we will still would like to have something in the newsletter. You would like to write an article in the newsletter? That would be great. And the newsletter is due on the 11th.
Yep.
Just as a reminder. Okay, so. So that's, does anybody have any questions about that? No? Okay. Also, number two, we will be doing a Merrill proclamation for the 150th anniversary of the Metropolitan Branch of the Baltimore and Ohio Railroad. We are honoring John Morris, who is a dedicated train guy. And assuming, and I'm looking at Catherine, but maybe I'll know more tomorrow, that they will be selling tickets for a train ride on Mark Train on Memorial Day. We'll be taking the train ride. It starts in Silver Spring and will go to all the way to Brunswick. So this will be on Memorial Day. It'll be an opportunity to ride the mark and then you'll, it'll bring you back. And it's pretty much an all day excursion, but once those tickets go live, we'll put it out on the list search. And so if you want to, if you want to join us, then please get your tickets for your family. It'll be a lot of fun. All right, so. So next item on the agenda is the Sustainable Kensington. Nate Ingle and Ann Lick there are chairs and Nate is not here. Ann, you got it all.
Sure.
So go ahead.
I'm pleased that tonight we have members of the Sustainable Kensington Committee here with us to present the work that our committee has been doing. Just a tiny bit of background before they take the podium. This group was convened in the fall after the town passed a resolution agreeing to participate in the Sustainable Maryland Program and pursue Sustainable Maryland Certification. We have about, I'd say, 10 or 12 active members, including representatives from the business community. And they've been hard at work putting together the beginning of our action plan. And we're going to hear tonight from a few of our committee reps, I believe. Karen, Daphne, Carolyn, come on up, please, and state your name for the record at the podium. And I think Alex, you have the slides, so you can share and just tell Alex when you're ready to advance.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Morrison. I'm going to start out and talk just a little bit briefly about what we've done in the past. If you want to put the slides up, you can keep going. So 54% of Maryland municipalities are participating in the Sustainable Maryland Program and 41% are certified. So we think it's time we get certified. A certification is good for three years. You have to do certain actions repeatedly. Some have to be done annually, some every few years. But everything we've seen in the application makes us think that what they're requiring are great ideas for Kensington. And we have some choice about what we apply for. So we are particularly trying to be careful. We follow the survey and what the townspeople are really interested in and are not filling out the forms just so that we can fill out the forms and get points, but trying to focus on what's useful for us as a town. So what we've done so far, I think you've been part of it. The town passed a resolution to go ahead with the application. We had a green team training, somebody from the state of Maryland, Sustainable Maryland came. We're now, we're now Sustainable Maryland Kensington instead of the green team to avoid confusion. We did an inventory of what we've already done, which is many of the things we'll be submitting for this year and are completing an action plan. I'm going to talk about the first year and what we're filling out now. And Karen will talk about the second and third year. And Daphne will talk about the deadlines to get the application in. So the main thing that we've had to do is to demonstrate that we've actually done the things that they are requesting. They have a whole menu of many, many, many different actions you can perform that are good for the environment. All of them, almost every piece requires a citizen education piece. So we need to demonstrate not only that we did the things, but that we've involved town members and that town members know about it. For some things, that was very easy. For some things, it's been a little trickier because we have things in place that we haven't had to remind people about. Or we've told people about in the past, but we haven't explained how it relates to sustainability. So you probably saw the E news on for Earth Day that fulfilled some of our obligations. And the town newsletter has been doing that, too. The bronze certification that we're asking for is worth, requires 150 points. We were really ambitious and said, oh, we'll start with silver, which requires 400. But since realized that was fool's gold. But we may go for that in future years. I'm just going to give you the basic areas and say very quickly what, what we're highlighting, what actions we say that we've taken. Under Community Action, we have a public art program that includes some murals in town. We participate in the Maryland Green Schools, one of the local elementary schools. We did the training. We have an action plan and we're working on a Sustainability Resource Center that will be on the website. Under Community Based Food Systems, we have a local farmer's market that we can document and it's well known. Under Energy, we have put in the public charging stations. Much of this was done with nobody from the green team doing anything. This was done by the town before we started. But what we're needing to do is document how it was done. We're working on a municipal energy audit. We're working on a municipal carbon footprint. We've got a pesticide free zone established because we're following the county regulations. We have a local business directory that's actually in the process of being updated, but we have had it for a while and we have it on our website. So the updating is good. And we are trying to promote, we are trying to keep the local businesses involved, as you'll hear in the year two plan. We have the organic waste composting, which luckily started in time for us to submit it. Under Natural Resources, we've been working on citizen engagement and watershed stewardship, particularly with Weed Warriors, which has been very successful and has a good number of people participating in it, which is helping the local parks a lot. We renewed our membership as a Tree City USA. We're documenting our pet waste program, which we're in very good shape for already. And we can count the fact that we have a National Register Historic District as part of our land use program that promotes sustainability. So that's where we are right now.
My name is Karen Badley-Cray. So the action plan, the first step was to conduct the community survey. And in that survey, we heard a lot of interest on greenhouse gas, on waste management, more organic waste composting. A lot of issues related to our watershed and water management, as well as bicycle pedestrian safety continued to be expressed there. So these are the actions that we have identified in our action plan that will take some time. They will also take some resources. So for example, for some of the energy audit, installing solar panels on some of the municipal buildings. If we try to expand organic waste composting to businesses or to other sort of waste management services for businesses, which they have a high interest in. Those are things which may have an implication on budget or need town resources in order to complete. The same for the stormwater management plan and the watershed protection plan. But we feel like our action plan for year two and three, first of all, kind of expand our actions into more of the categories. So the next time that we apply for certification, we think we'll be able to increase our points and achieve that silver rating. That's our target, as well as create, I think, a more comprehensive plan for the town to be able to manage and monitor just how it's doing in terms of sustainability and then respond to the things that were actually of concern to the people in Kensington. I will have Daphne talk about our deadlines.
I want to mention one thing I forgot. Participating in Sustainable Maryland will make us eligible for applying for numerous grants, like solar panels on that town building, energy efficient vehicles, et cetera. So it's more than just getting the little stars, future funding.
Hello, I'm Daphne Wagner. So to get certificate, certified for the bronze certification, we are going to likely submit our application by June 1st for initial review. And then we're going to officially submit it on June 30th, by June 30th. And then by October 1st, we should get a year if we've gotten the certification or not. And that the bronze certification is valid for three years. But we were gonna, we're gonna go for silver certification and probably next year or the year after that. And that's it.
Thank you. Council, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Nobody gonna, yeah, go ahead.
Nobody gonna tell us what an insect hotel is? It's on the sheet.
Like the bee hotels, they're usually like little bits of bamboo or sticks of different sizes that bugs can get into later on.
We got plenty of bamboo.
Um, my question is. One, this is great. And I think really, really manageable, starting with bronze certification. The things that you've already identified, how many point, like whereabouts are you on points? If you need 150.
We are possibly between 170 and 200. There are a couple of actions we're still waiting to see exactly if we have them. But we feel like we're secure. They will give us feedback at each stage. So they write back and say document more or something. So we'll have a chance to amend the application during the process.
This is really exciting because I know a couple of years ago, previous council person was excited, but I don't think they were able to get as engaged as Ann and Nate have been. And engaged means to broaden it out to the community because that's really what it takes is the worker bees to go out there and do, you know, to share the tasks, the many tasks. And, and I, so I am just so pleased that, I mean, really, our residents have really grasped onto this and are really excited about doing it because that's what it takes. Because a lot of our municipalities in Montgomery County have registered, but they haven't gone the next step. And the next step is a big step. And we were lucky that we had a lot of points already. So we weren't starting, you know, at the bottom. But I'm really impressed. I just think it's, I've been to several of your meetings. I mean, it's just fantastic.
We have great leaders.
Yeah, you do. You really do have good leader. And that's what it takes. It's good leadership and commitment to, but it takes everybody else, though, to help do with the work. And so that's great. Does anybody in the audience have a question? If you do, you're going to have to go up to the, to the podium. I'm sorry about that, but we are doing hybrid. No questions?
Nothing online.
I'll share something.
Okay, please.
Just a couple of things. First, I want all the Girl Scouts to know that Daphne is a high school junior. So you can participate in town committee as a student and we encourage that. So as you get older and you're able to earn student service learning hours, we would encourage you to get involved in our town committee. She's been a fabulous active participant in the group. The second thing I wanted to mention in terms of the municipal energy audit, I wanted to share that Nate has been working with Matt and others to find resources for how the town can not only complete the energy audit, but look at greenhouse reduction steps that we can take and how we can leverage incentives from the Inflation Reduction Act and other state and federal programs. And through that outreach, was connected with the Montgomery County Green Bank and you all had a meeting.
We already did. And the audit, we should be starting that next week.
Hoping?
No, that was what Scott said.
Yeah, we were going to start, yeah.
Yeah.
They're able to subsidize it to a level that we can approve without council approval.
Right, and that's a grant through a grant. Right. So we're really excited about that. And I believe we're also working on grants because we have to replace some of our HVAC and hoping to do much higher efficiency. The downside to all that is it takes 36 weeks to get some of this equipment. So the building won't be used much during the winter. So anyway.
So we are exploring.
But we are. Yes, so we'll be moving along with that. So that's exciting.
And so that's just one example. I think there'll be more things like that, depending on how involved they are, how much, you know, money they may require. We will be back discussing in town council, the additional actions that you see laid out. So I really want to thank the team for being so active and, and we've got a few of the members here. We also have Ken, Owen and Catherine in the audience. Guys want to wave? And if any of you want to chat with them after the meeting, now you know who some of your neighbors are who are involved in Sustainable Kensington.
Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
I'm going to take number five, which is the bronze. And I'm gonna, we're gonna go ahead and let Pedestrian Bicycle Access and Safety Working Group go next, but we'll switch five and six around. So girls, you'll be number five instead of six on the agenda. So you guys are up.
Thank you. I'm Alan Simon and this is John Rogers. We're representing the group. As you said, Nate is out of the country. Chris Sappi, welcome to the group, is on Zoom. So we want to talk about the most recent walk audit that took place and some of the results and what we're doing to kind of prioritize and put some of those initiatives forward. So a little, little background on the group. So we were formed in 2020. And you know, the goal being to improve the walkability, the bikeability and the safety and all throughout the town. And the group consists of not just residents, but some people from, you know, neighboring communities as well. We meet monthly. We do advise the town on, you know, where should we put the focus to, you know, prioritize your spending money? What are the areas of greatest need? And one of the things that has led to the priorities is the walkability, bikeability audit, which we're doing every other year to biennial audit of all of the blocks. So if we go on to the next slide, please. Um, the first audit we did was in 2020. And there were 64 segments, the segment just being a block. The 64 segments that we audited and that took place between October and December of 2020. We put together a report that was presented to the council in February 2021. And there were a lot of improvements that came out of that. So really two categories there were.
Alex, I think he's on the next slide. Oh, it's stuck?
To move forward. And there's a handout, too, if you.
Yeah. Um.
There you go.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Great. So there were really two categories of things that came out of that first audit. One is short and midterm improvements, things we could do right away, including things like, you know, where they were missing or damaged signs, put those back up. New pedestrian crossing paths, you know, where there was maybe a safety issue or that kind of thing you see around town. Additional street lighting where there are areas where it might've been, you know, dangerous to hang. And just prioritization in general for sidewalk repairs and needed crosswalks in the town. The other more longer term thing, the data to provide input for the TLC grant evaluation, let's open your bigger things in terms of Connecticut Avenue corridor and all of that kind of thing. So, you know, we want to both make sure from improvements as well as sort of the bigger picture. And then moving on to the most recent audit, 2022 audit, the one we just recently did. That took place from November through February. Now, the first thing I wanted to point out is we did, when we went to do the second audit, we did an audit of the audit, if you will. So remember on the last slide, there were 64 segments? We recognized when we started looking at doing this that there were 44 segments that just weren't included in the first audit. So what we've done now, we've got comprehensive coverage of all the segments throughout the town. And we also had a lot of people, a lot more people involved this time, too. Through the Walktober event, we got some interest and people that weren't previously on the committee that wanted to participate because they cared about the issues, which was great because that expanded the community engagement. And the other thing we did was enhance the audit with photos. So the first time around, a lot of data we collected in a spreadsheet and we updated that data as well. But we also now have a folder on the town's G drive where many of the blocks or issues, the good and bad, are now documented with photos. So we have a nice archive that we can go back to and reference, you know, the next time around or really for any purpose within the town, if you want to see what a particular block or intersection looks like, it's out there. So we ended up with 100 plus recommendations. I think there were about 112 or 115 individual recommendations in our spreadsheet. So, you know, what can we do with that to kind of make sense of it? And what should we focus on? So we developed a new prioritization methodology on how to, how to do exactly that. And I'm going to turn it over to John to talk about how we did it and what's the vision and what we do going forward.
Thanks, Alan. Yes, so before we can talk about prioritization, I wanted to highlight another accomplishment that our group achieved recently, end of 2022, early 23, we developed a vision statement that talked about what our group does. And I think it's on the website and here's a brief summary, but talked about envisioning a community where people of all ages and abilities can walk, roll and bike safely and comfortably. We, as part of our advising town, we identified a few prioritized areas that needed greatest, greatest focus. And those are sort of on things like repairing barriers, looking at major state highway roads like Madison Avenue, the railroad tracks, focusing on vulnerable users. So that's around schools, playgrounds. Other, other similar land uses, looking at areas that are high use, where you see a lot of pedestrians, a lot of bicyclists. So looking at the downtown commercial core, other, other areas that draw a lot of pedestrians and bicyclists. And then also focusing on high crash locations. So we go to the next slide. That vision statement, really, we started looking at the various pieces that we had and we said, how can we leverage everything that we have and how can we layer the work on top of each other? So this graphic is just sort of a high level description of the approach that we took, where we built on the walk audit, all the great data that the 14 volunteers collected. We applied, so that that gave us our baseline. We have all the data. Then we wanted to layer on the vision statement. So we took that vision statement, and I'll talk about this a little bit more detail in a second, but we assigned a score to each segment based on how that segment scored relative to the vision statement. That resulted in a prioritized list of roadway segments. And then from that, we've come up with a prioritized list of recommended improvements focused on pedestrian and bicycle safety and mobility.
And do those recommendations go to the traffic and mobility committee or the mobility and traffic committee? Okay, you'll get there, sorry. Jumping ahead.
So just a little bit more about each one of these steps. So the walk audit, the map here is a map of all the segments in the, in the, in the town that we analyzed. That was layer one. We could go to the next slide. And then we took that vision statement that I went over quickly just a few minutes ago and assigned points based on how each statement are performed relative to the vision objectives. So we sort of had an example of further repairing barriers. We looked at, is this a state or county road? And if so, we assigned, you know, a point. We did that for each of the other metrics related to the vision and sort of assigned between zero and one points for each one of those, summed them all up at the end. So a segment could have scored between zero points, meaning it's, it's doing okay, doing great. And then four points, up to four points saying, you know, this is a state highway road. There's a lot of crashes. It's an activity center. There's a lot of vulnerable users. And so that's really where we should, those are sort of the segments that pop, right? And that's where we should, we should focus. Next slide. This sort of graphical representation of where the segments are. And then finally, on the next slide. As Alan mentioned, as we were going out and doing the walk, the audit, we actually were asking everyone to come up, like do observations, come up with recommendations that they, that they had, is there missing sidewalks? Is there overgrown bush blocking views? And so we sort of went back to those, revamped them a little bit, just looked at some sort of usability issues. Lots of great ideas that came out of our group and trying to like pare them down a little bit to something that might, a capital program or capital project that might fit within town budget. And so we did that as our staff core. And next slide. Just want to give you a little bit of a snapshot of the recommendation spreadsheet to summarize all the recommendations for the prioritized segments in table format. And we have that and have to compare that. But basically, the end product is a list of recommendations that we think should be explored further.
Where are the rest of the spreadsheet? Is that online or is that on the website?
It's something our group has worked on.
It's, it's shared.
Okay.
It's not, it's not online generally.
It's not ready for primetime or?
Well, okay, the, the recommendations as a result are, I mean, so it's shared amongst the group. I mean, it's saying, and anyone else who would like it, I think we, I don't.
There's some next steps.
We want to take those recommendations and move, move them forward in some fashion. But go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. So that's, that's the next step. So we want to work with town council manager and staff to implement our recommendation under jurisdiction. I think that takes a little bit more of its fine tooth comb, is, you know, is this recommendation worthwhile? Is it fit within a program or a budget? But we did try to focus on things that were like missing crosswalks or switching out or bar crosswalks with ladder crosswalks that are more visible, especially in the areas where you have the most pedestrians. And so for the ones that fit within the Kensington jurisdiction, we want to go forward. For those that are within SHA or Montgomery County. And so for the ones that fit within the Kensington, uh, jurisdiction, we want to go forward, um, for those that are within S H A or Montgomery County. Um, continue, continue to, um, advocate for those areas being prioritized. Um, one of the ideas that came out of our group was sort of this idea of packaging recommendations. Um, some of the neighboring jurisdictions, there are lists to the blisters. Um, and so I think, uh, like a number of our recommendations is focused on higher visibility crosswalk. So if you package or five or six together, try to install them all at the same time and then sort of publicize it that way. Um, and then another key point is, uh, intersecting with the, um, Montgomery County Parks and Planning, uh, pedestrian master process. One of their key recommendations is, uh, to do a, a walk audit until we can share that information, share how towns or experience that process and how they leverage the other work that we did to, um, elevate the, uh, most important safety improvements, um, that, that we think should be advanced. Um, and then looking forward, I'm not even going to talk about this a little bit, to, um, incorporating lessons that we learned, um, from this process, uh, into the next walk audit, which is already, uh, you know, time is, time is taking every two years.
Right, right. Um, I mean, yeah, I didn't have anything specific on that front, but, but.
Alan, could you just get closer to the mic just because of the hybrids?
We improved the process this time around in a few ways, and yes, we, we will, we do intend to do that, um. And anyone that's interested in either participating in that or just being active in the group, contact one of us or contact Nate Engel.
Um, yeah, and I think there's really the, some of the things that, some of the projects that may actually come out of this process, we can sort of see what fits well and what the town can do or something that's particularly, particularly resonating with S H A or M C D O T. Uh, and we can sort of have that information, uh, that what projects are like, are successful. And then as we approach the next walk audit, we can sort of as we're going out and doing all this really great data collection, we can have those, those types of projects in mind and look for those opportunities to implement. Um, you know, whatever, uh, types of projects we find successful this time around.
Yeah, and some of our data too will be the Montgomery County's effort in, in tracking, you know, sidewalk and walkability issues and that kind of thing to be very good in communication and so.
Okay, I know it's been very helpful. Um, Matt and I have been attending the S H A quarterly meetings with Nate. Been very helpful. I know some of the things though that you're talking at town, um, I really would recommend that you, um, a group meet up with Matt to sit down and go through all the recommendations because as he sets up work with N Z I, uh, our street and concrete guy, some of the things that you're interested in could get on the list. So, um, that's really important to make sure that that happens sooner than later, so it can be scheduled.
Yeah, I think that's one of the first things we'd like to do. And, and if we want to put, um, the spreadsheet in its current form or substitute of that out somewhere where everyone can access it, we'd be happy to do that too. We'll, we'll discuss.
Well, I think you start with the, our town manager so he can lay it out and then bring it back to us too. So, great. Um, council, do you guys have any questions?
I know, I'm, I think it's terrific. Um, very thorough. I guess I do have one. All the photos that are being taken in this next iteration of the audio, this current one. Um, they're going on to the G drive. You guys have done an incredible amount of mapping already and setting out a grid and nomenclature for it. Is there any desire to overlay that with the images so that somebody clicks on an intersection and wonders why did this get three points or why did this get two points and we can see the actual images that were taken?
Um, I like.
I understand the undertaking I'm asking.
I like that idea. And so we're partially down that path. I will say this, so in the, in this free big spreadsheet, you know, that has a hundred eight
Yep.
segments and lots of recommendations, there's a column for the, the folder. There's a link on each one of those rows. If you click on that, it takes you directly into the specific folder for that block on the G drive. So it's not quite the, let's say the graphical, you know, what you described, saying, let me look at this and see how many points that is. Now, the points, the methodology John, you know, put together, you know, is in another, another part of the spreadsheet, but so that could be done, and I'd say we're partially down that path already. And if, if we make the, the data collected available, whether it's to the, the counselor to public at large, you'd be able to just click on the link and get right to that whole, even without us doing anything.
Great. Anne?
Well, thank you for your work. This is a tremendous amount of effort, um, that has clearly has gone into walking each of these segments. Um, not just once, but multiple times and cataloging everything. Uh, it's great to see the progress. One question I have relates to, um, the prioritization. So I love the way that you articulated, you know, the vision statement and the objectives and then ranked according to that. I'm wondering if your ranking also included some assessment of the feasibility of the recommendation, whether it's something that's within, you know, the town's capability to ta- to tackle, or if it's something that's more complicated because it's going to involve S H A or it's going to involve, require a greater capital outlay.
Good question. So the, the prioritization was really based on need only, um, and then sort of after the, the sort intersection of, of greatest need were identified, then did we come back and say, okay, here are the recommendations that would improve safety and mobility at those intersections. So, um, there wasn't, uh, the sort of feasibility, um, was not part of the, the ranking on, on establishing a prioritization, but sort of an overlay on afterwards. And I think that's the a really important next step to make sure that what we've come up with and we try to do some of that ourselves, but I think, you know, there are people here that would have a really good idea.
That was one of the issues with the twenty twenty walk. A lot of it was outside of our jurisdiction and the council knows the difficulty it is to get S H A to move on a smaller project.
Right.
Um, so we'll definitely need to kind of go through the list and figure out what we can put into an existing contract and, uh, kind of go from there. So.
Thank you. Darren, any questions?
I, I was stucco. I mean, this is a tremendous undertaking and it's, um, there, there's a lot of work and a lot of areas to improve. Um, and I don't want to, I'm, I'm not a technology wizard at all, but it, it to me, it almost cries out for like a G I S layer. Because I, I look at the, the mapping and I, I mean, I see how you sort of lay out the segments. Um, then, but I don't know, like, how you fit certain projects into the segments and, and maybe it's because I need to talk to Nate and you guys about it. But for example, the, the hawk signal at Wheatley. It, it doesn't appear that there's a segment on here for that priority area. And the segment of crossing knolls, um, at, at Detrick, which we're sort of playing with. I mean, it's a, it's not a not a road segment or sidewalk segment. It's a, a new segment and it, and we're dealing with it at the S H A level. Um, but I just wonder if, if, um, one possibility would be to, because we talked about using G I S for other things in town. Um, and in the past, the cost of the software and tools was a little bit, we weren't sure if it was justified. This could be another layer where you can prioritize the the, the improvement based more on coordinates rather than on, than on a segment. It's just something to think about. I, I, but I, I, and I don't mean to take away from the, the vast amount of work you've already done. I'm just sort of wondering how we manage this level of information.
Um, this certainly could be done using G I S and I think, um, in my day job, like that's what we would do. But, uh, it's a volunteer effort.
Yeah.
There's a level of granularity that you get from actually doing walk audit yourself.
Sure.
It's on the ground, um, that I think, you know, gave us better data to work with and also sort of create more volume within the groups. I think that's something you don't get with G I S. Um, this was also free. Um, I think it's another, another nice aspect, but I, I think, um, yeah, certainly this could be streamlined and the results, um, I think could be, you know, even more technically sound if you relied on, um, G I S, but, um, in the absence of that, this was something that we were able to do.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Have we ever explored with the county the, their G I S program and whether or not a municipality can
Yes.
provide the data and is it possible?
Yes.
The county, i- if you're familiar with their G I S and you can add layers and.
We, we actually used it with the T L C grant.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, me, because that goes to my question, adding it to matter and cheap, easy, right? You just throw Google Maps and take the data and just drop all your pins. But a real G I S, if the county has it, maybe, uh, between Nate and, I mean, that's something I'd be happy to help explore as well as leveraging the county's assets. Because it should be free and they have the expertise and we just take the data you already have and just blow it to them.
Yeah.
So.
You, have you had much conflict between bicyclists and, and pedestrians in your?
Um, I mean, not, not so much in terms of priorities. Um, I mean, I'm sure tho- those kinds of, you know, weighing that will come up, but it really hasn't been an issue so far.
Okay. Um, does anybody in the audience have any questions for these gentlemen, for John or Alan? Can you come forward? You're going to have to ask the question at the podium and just give your if somebody has a hand up.
Last of a question and more of commentary. I live off of, um, Tuckerman Lane and we have a hawk beacon and, um, I just want to caution, I know you guys have one too at the Cape Town Skate Park. Um, we had a couple of pedestrians hit and before the hawk beacon at a cross, um, walk and it didn't ha- well, it had an old signal that it flashed, I guess. Um, what I've seen daily driving passes, like my community entrance is right there. Um, initially when they're put in, I think there needs to be a lot of community education because people don't understand them. The pedestrians and the bicyclists as well as the drivers and people. The pedestrians may not use them appropriately and they're assigned for the drivers, but then also sometimes when they are used appropriately and some drivers are trying to really adhere to the red light and stay stopped the whole time. Um, they, other drivers get very upset and can go around and that's when somebody can really get hit. Um, and then we did have an older gentleman, he was jogging and we don't, last I knew, we don't know whether he used the signal or not, but he did get hit. Um, and there are, if you Google, there are nice um, uh, images that explain a hawk, but I know not everybody stops to understand it and you know, once they zoom off to work or wherever they're going, it's out of their mind. Um, but I would just say maybe the police department could get involved and help educate the community. So.
Okay, so, thank you.
That's one of the things that I, just having dealt with traffic for years now. It, it's a far more sophisticated process than you might think at a visceral level. You think, oh, we should mark all these crosswalks. And then you hear learning from county D O T that says, no, if you mark a crosswalk that is rarely used, drivers will not be used to stopping there. And so there, I, it, to me, it, it struck me first as Orwellian to describe an unmarked crosswalk. But that's what Maryland adheres to until a, a crossing gets a certain amount of use and and the hawk signals is the same way. They don't want to put them in where they will rarely be used because the drivers won't be acclimated to, to use it. So we always think more is better, but not, that doesn't always, it's not always the case. And it's interesting to listen to the county D O T people talk about how it, it could actually make things worse.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Oh, was there anybody online?
And Bambal.
Okay, uh, Joe, you have a question?
Yeah, I was wondering if the presenters might focus for a minute on the, uh, sort of the clash of need and practicality in terms of installing new sidewalks. Installing sidewalks is pretty clearly a way to promote pedestrian safety, but installing them in places where they don't exist now is, is, is very difficult in terms of getting neighborhood, uh, buy-in on that. I'm wondering if you could talk about that for a moment. And the places in town I have in mind are portion of Kent Street where there's a lot of, uh, interaction with pedestrians as well as, um, vehicular traffic and and bikes. And then the whole length of Frederick Avenue is, uh, well, almost the whole length of Frederick Avenue is without sidewalks. And these are places that clearly do need them and would benefit from them, but, uh, I'm not sure that's ever going to be a reality.
You guys able to just give an opinion on that?
Sure. I mean, just, you know, there's so many questions about feasibility and, and I think, uh, sidewalks are expensive. And so we were, uh, very selective and where we thought that there were key gaps, again, focusing on where there is for users and, and key, key drivers of, of mostly pedestrian traffic. And so, um, I think the, the short answer is, uh, there's a lot of places in town that don't have sidewalks. Um, but let's focus, be really, really hyper focused on where those person that wants to go in, uh, because they are expensive and want to make sure you're getting a big bang for the buck. Um, I think the other piece too is that, um, there may be some, and this is, you know, for further conversation, but some areas where the, where a road is really, really wide. Um, and you may be able to, rather than sort of build from the curb back to a private property, you can maybe think about the space that's already between the curves, um, and reserving that for for pedestrians, whether that's in the typical sidewalk or just sort of marked off space or, or something else. So, um, there's lots of room for, um, looking at ways that you can be efficient, um, and, and as cost effective as possible.
Okay. Um, Anne, Bambal?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I would like to, uh, raise the topic of electric bikes and motorized scooters and things as they relate to, uh, paths that will be shared by pedestrians and the bikes. Uh, I live on Kensington Parkway and I see many, many, many more electric bikes and a lot of motorized, um, scooters. So how are we going to think about shared paths for pedestrians and those? Thank you.
Are we planning any of those in town or?
Um, that was really, at least outside the realm of, uh, what we've looked at so far. So I, I don't think we can speak to that right. I mean, it's a, it's a valid issue certainly, but we're not really, uh, prepared to speak to that.
Okay. And I, yeah, I, I do think it's something worth the, either the group or us just thinking generally. Because in the good old days, there were pedestrians and bikes and cars. And we've created an entire spectrum of speeds and vulnerability of these people where you might be on a scooter and the scooter can go three miles an hour or, or it can go fifteen miles an hour. And the electric bikes can, I mean, they can do serious damage if they hit pedestrians. So I, I think both at the state level about where these vehicles belong, whether it's in the road or on the sidewalk is, is something that we we ought to pay attention to as well.
Okay, great.
We'll take a look at it. Anne, thank you.
Okay, is there any?
There's a.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is we're going to bring the bronze award project forward. And this is announcement by the junior girl scout troop thirty-four zero six seven. We had two groups going for bronze tonight. I know, that's right.
Yeah, Girl Scout Junior Troop three, four, oh, six, seven. We are honored to be a part of the town Kensington Council meeting. Having the opportunity to share something that is important to us as members of a global community is very exciting. They have been working hard on our bronze. The bronze award is a leadership adventure with the purpose to make a difference in our community. It is the highest honor a girl scout junior can achieve. The process includes several steps. To know about children. The losing, uh, jury, taking, following, being, and, yeah. We explored our community. That places where there are a lot of trash that was thrown up. I researched about an endangered animal, the Indian cloud. I researched about many of them. I wish to share our most people, our own step pedestrian, the bicycles in that community were safe. We narrowed it down. We wanted to ideal. Um, and then we narrowed down for the research. And thought about impact and sustainability. We all had one common goal that we wanted to accomplish. One of the final two projects was investing in the Indian, the endangered species, the Indian.
Sorry, the Indiana what?
That.
That. Oh, cool.
Uh, the object is to educate people about that song that is very significant. Now we are working to leave the scene, thank you for the recent history. The talents we have to put it all together. You have, but I focus that side and that considering what was. Our other ideas to participate in a community event where we could have a table set up and share what we have learned with other members of our community. We appreciate the support of the town council and the time to speak to the community today. We are looking forward to sharing our progress as we work through our Bronze Award project.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions?
I do. I'll say with, in addition to hand signals. Would you all consider also training new bike riders on how to properly and safely cross streets? Is I see, and I think it goes back to the presentation just before you, a lot of what you just heard and what we just were trying to do as a town. Is try to make safe intersections that are easy for vehicles to identify bike riders. And bike riders to make eye contact with those vehicles so that they can safely pass. And if you see anything. That you think makes it difficult, you know to come back and tell us because then we'll take it back to the, the committee and we'll try and improve it. That'll work.
Uh, well, this is great. I love hearing from you and hearing how much your process resembled the. Two teams that we heard from tonight, the community groups with Sustainable Kensington and our pedestrian and bike safety group. So you are on the right path. I'm just curious, um, I'd love to hear, or you can raise your hand, how many of you ride your bike? In your neighborhood or in the town? Do you? Yeah. And, um, have you, um, been able to get to the point where you're able to cross streets? Yes, I know. You're a little nervous, some of the streets. Okay, so I think Don Connor's point of focusing on crossing streets is probably a. A good place to start. I just wanted to mention, I know a couple of years ago, Friends of Warner Circle. Partnered to do, uh, bike safety lesson at Warner Circle. And so that's something that could be explored again. Um, and then obviously, if you do wanna do a community education event, we have our farmer's market every Saturday. That's a great place that you could come to. Um, we also have, uh, Kensington Second Annual Juneteenth Event on June seventeenth in St. Paul Park where there will be a lot of people. So I wanted to share those two thoughts, but thank you so much for your work and for being here tonight.
If you wanted to have a table at, uh, across the street at Howard Avenue to talk about bike safety, that's an opportunity too on a Saturday during the farmer's market. That'd be a great opportunity and Catherine Wood is in the audience here. She helped organize the big bike safety event. That we had at Warner Circle, so she would be a good source to help you out too. So that's very exciting. Thank you, girls.
I have a last question. How many people are gonna be around the Fourth of July? And will you be in our bike parade? Well, just putting it as a reminder, the town has a big bike parade on July fourth. That's St. Paul Park and it's a great place to come out and use your bike and eat the ride around with all the fire department blocking out the streets.
And there are lots of little kids that may not know how to manage their bikes, so that's another opportunity. Anybody on, online have a question? Oh, I'm sorry, Darren, sorry.
I, I will say, um, I love democracy. I love voting. But I also love bats.
Oh, you're a little upset about the bat?
And I'm just wondering if, having done research on these bats, that you might share it with us. So that if, if there's something we can do to protect the bats or help their habitat, we, we can appreciate that as well.
Uh, yeah, I would share because, um, I really liked. To research about it, um, I. I like wrote down a bunch of ideas that we would do to help, so I would share.
I, I would really appreciate that.
We had maybe even incorporated into Sustainable Kensington's plans. Oh, yeah, that'd be great. The work that we're looking at.
That's gotta be worth at least a hundred and fifty.
Going for that silver. Absolutely.
So, so. We were, we weren't meeting in person for a bunch of years, but before that, we were, we'd bring snacks occasionally for people that came to our meetings. And there are twenty or so cupcakes there that I hope people will get either now or on your way.
On your way out, be sure to grab a cupcake. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, alright, so, uh, just so you know, Tara had, the troop leader had reached out to me about the girls. And as soon as I heard about sustainable and bike safety, I'm like, oh my gosh, this is like. So this is how the council had this opportunity to get involved with the troop and it's been a real joy. And I know Anne has spent time with, uh, at a meeting. I've done one. I don't think Nate's been able to arrange one, but hopefully soon he, when he gets back from. Africa, he can do it. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. It's been a real, real pleasure helping him out. Absolutely. Okay, so we're going to now go to, uh, the number six on the agenda, which is now the, uh, town council chamber. Um, the council of, uh, Chevy Chase View, which is our next door neighbor, reached out to us. Uh, they have been, um, meeting at Grace, not Grace, uh, Christ Episcopal. And they would like to start doing it hybrid and the church is not able to accommodate that. And unfortunately, um, the town of Chevy Chase is not as fortunate as we are to have our own town hall. So they don't own actual property in their town. So, um, they've made a request, um, to use our chamber. Uh, on, uh, I think it was the second Wednesday, third Wednesday.
Yes.
It's a Wednesday. Um, for their meeting, so we're bringing that to the council to see if they have any, any thoughts. It probably would, um, they would probably pay some sort of fee, but I would suggest we let the town managers work that out. And there would probably, um, be opportunities to also do, um. Council or committee meetings here as well, so. Checking with the council if there's any objections to sharing our space with another municipality.
I don't have any. I think it seems like a good idea.
I actually, uh, also because we have municipal cable in the building who could then work to help broadcast like we have the benefit of, I think. Makes incredibly too much sense.
Yeah, no, I think it'd be great. Uh, also, um, their, uh, their town manager is also retiring. Their town manager is a, is a resident of Chevy Chase View, so, um, their office has been her house. So they will actually be renting office space also in the town of Kensington because they have no office building, so we are. You know, even more fortunate, so they'll be spending a lot of time in the town of Kensington. So I think it's a great way of getting closer to our neighbor. Um, does anybody in the audience have a question about this or? Anybody online? No hands? Okay, Matt, I think you've got the go ahead to, uh, you know, talk to Jana. Figure out how we can schedule that. Okay, super. They do wanna start in June.
Okay.
Yeah, the June. Okay. Right, that was best. Um, so we'll go ahead and, uh, get the council reports, um, before we move on to town manager and staff. Um, Darren, anything you wanna report?
I don't have anything to report. I mean, at some point, if we have the, uh. Meet and greet, I can, I can talk about stuff I've done for the past two years and sort of things that I'd like, like to do going forward.
Okay, do we wanna go ahead and schedule a meet and greet while we're here or so we can, um, publicize that?
We've held open the.
Well, I was thinking we would do it on election night.
Just collapse it into.
Since we're not having an election, actual elections. June.
Monday, June fifth.
Yeah.
Four weeks from tonight.
You wanna go ahead and schedule that?
Sure.
Okay, we can promote that. Everybody okay with an ice cream truck?
I mean, I don't get my kids to a meeting.
Any questions from the audience or online about an ice cream truck?
Can we be sure to let the. Elected officials that always come to our election.
Yes, we will definitely invite all our other elected officials that like.
They usually.
They do. Yeah, now it's not their election night, so they might not come out in droves, but they'll, they might still come out.
Right.
Okay, should we, usually we go, uh, six to nine. Should we shorten it to six to seven or?
Uh, six to eight.
Six to eight? Okay.
And it's just. Come and go as you please.
Okay, sounds good. Bring the dogs, bring the kids. Perfect. Okay. Um, alright, so. Um, Anne, anything?
Uh, just briefly from the Greenscape Committee, I wanna, um, point out, uh, since Catherine Wood is here tonight, I really wanna thank her. For all the work that she has done to get Weed Warriors very active in Kensington. Yes. Very active. Uh, we've had about, I think Catherine reported fifteen to twenty people showing up regularly to tear down. According to the rules, invasive vines, um, that are threatening the trees and the Silver Creek watershed along Kensington Parkway. Tremendous amount of progress has been made. Um, the Greenscape Committee also had a good turnout for the Tree Care one O one, um, workshop that was held last Saturday. Um, Von Gurney helped to organize that, so I'm really grateful for the committee members that are making these things happen in town. Um, quick announcement, uh, you heard me mention Second Annual Juneteenth, um, in Kensington, we're gonna have a big celebration at St. Paul Park. Uh, from twelve to four P M with historical reenactment, music, um, lots of community groups. I think we're even planning a pickup basketball game with law enforcement. Um, which should be a lot of fun, so mark your calendars, it's the day after school's out. Um, and then one other item I just wanted to put out there for the council that we can talk about at a future point. But I was reflecting on last month's council meeting where we were discussing, um, Joseph's Park and Karen, I'm gonna. I'm gonna point you out now. I think you had shared in your comments that we seem to be coupling. You know, a park with a, with needing parking and our historic commercial district and maybe we needed to decouple those things. And just seeing the breadth of things that are happening in the community right now with the pedestrian and bike safety working groups, Sustainable Kensington. Um, potential, you know, desire to, to work on stormwater management and green space. Protection, that it might be good if we could bring all of these different strands of prioritization together. And a community workshop where we could kind of think through how they fit together, what our priorities are. We can't do everything. Um, how much are these things gonna cost and, and start kind of thinking on a longer term horizon as Connor, you mentioned. We have this longer term horizon in mind, but maybe a, a more public, um, workshop would help with bringing it together. So it's something I'd like to explore.
Right, and I think we were looking at probably October would be the earliest that we could put something like this.
Take some work.
It'll take a lot of work. So, okay, that's great. Thanks. Um, Connor?
Just two items. One, the flats at Kensington, there was a public hearing at, uh, park and planning. They just had a slight modification to their application that was approved. Um, and I believe they have a public hearing coming up here shortly.
No, that was for the other.
The other one.
The other.
So, but just.
The other being not in the town.
Yes. The, uh, but people had asked if that went back to the DRB unit. It, our letter of support had gone in and it did pass, uh, by the, uh, county council or county planning board. Um, and my only other one is just a, a bright little spot on the north side to welcome, uh, Stuart and Sabina Sparkers, new daughter. Who was born May first and that would be Elsie May.
Oh, sweet, nice. Any, uh, whether the cafe has opened yet?
Cafe has not opened. Um, if you've been by the cafe.
This is at Modena on the other side, on the north side.
Four times this week. Um, it was, it is actually open, but it is open to residents only right now. And that was always originally the plan, it opened the twenty-eighth to residents in the building. It was slated to open May second to the public. Um, upon arriving on May second, it came to realize it is not open to the public. Due to.
Or their sign.
Due to, uh, situations outside of their control, which is.
Yeah, what did that?
As much information as we've gotten yet, Jen will get back to me. She said, um, it, she just didn't get back to me before tonight.
Okay, she should be thrilled at how excited we are about the opening of this place.
She is. I think she's a little more frustrated with other government agencies who are not working. As enthusiastically as we were.
Okay, um, I have not much to report except to remind her and everybody who, uh, provides information to the journal that is due on, uh, June eleventh. I mean, uh, May eleventh. I would like to ask either Catherine or Owen to come up and give a little report on the hundred and fiftieth. Um, net line about what's coming up Memorial Day weekend, if you could. Oh, come on, girls.
I mean, she tapped you.
That's, you have been to a ten thousand meetings, you should be prepared. Just say what's coming up that weekend. I know. Should've stayed online. Thanks. I know. Just what's happening at Baby Cat? What is going on there?
My, it's, there's a, this is all celebrating the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the opening. The Baltimore and Ohio branch line. Of the railroad, but I mean, I submit I'm missing on that, but, um, which is very exciting. Really is. So we're having, uh, on the twenty eighth Sunday, uh, the Sunday of Memorial Day. There's sort of an all-town party, so everybody can come, all ages. It's not just for the grownups. Uh, at Baby Cat and there will be everything, um, like music. Food, uh, there'll be a table for kids. I'm looking at you, Catherine. Uh, there will be a special group. Actually named, we don't know how yet, they're working on the name. And just lots of fun. It's just going to be tremendous. If I've forgotten anything.
If anybody didn't know, the B and O runs right through the town, just in case anybody's missed that, so this is why we're all excited.
There's, there's a lot of history to the opening.
Yes.
I'm sorry, to the opening of that railroad because it really changed the county and it changed Kensington. It's suddenly involved, if you like, the industrial revolution, uh, to the county. Okay, I'm being. Done that one, but it's fine, it really changed, um.
And, and we have one of the few original, uh, stations.
Do.
So, um.
Second oldest in the county. Uh, so that's Sunday and then the Monday of Memorial Day, Memorial Weekend. There is a train line, um, on the Mark Line and it's starting at Silver Spring and going to Brunswick. And, uh, it's gonna stop at Kensington and last time they did this twenty-five years ago when, um, we celebrated the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. Two hundred plus people got on at Kensington, so we're expecting, uh, uh, there's more people living in Kensington now, so. Um, do we have a definite date? The tickets aren't on sale yet.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, we think it's imminent, um, and word will get out, but you will have to buy a ticket in advance to get on at Kensington. Then you will take, there will be narrator on board pointing out, um, uh, points of interest. You will have to pay for the ticket then, free, uh, but then you get an hour and a half to an hour and a half thing in Brunswick. And then you come back. It'll also stop at Point of Rocks to do a sort of photo op. I don't quite understand that, but it's definitely doing a photo op at, uh, Winter Rocks and it's just going to be tremendously exciting. And we hope everybody comes to everything.
Thank you. You can, you can fuss at me tomorrow in our meeting. Well, and just so the, uh, Matt lives in Brunswick. So Matt's gonna come to the train station so we can hang out with Matt up in Brunswick in his neck of the woods. And then, uh, also, uh, our public works crew is going to take the train. So if you wanna talk to Jason and, um, Pablo and Joe, you can come along and, uh, hang out with our public works crew. So they're very excited. Um, Joe's never been on a train, never been on a train. I know, right? So it'll be fun for him. They're very excited about coming. Anyway, so thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions regarding our reports? Okay, then we will, uh, move on to, um, the town manager. Matt?
Uh, Mayor, as, uh, Council Lector noted earlier this evening, uh, the town audit, uh, is going through, uh.
The energy audit.
The energy audit, uh, with, uh, with the help of Green Bank and Spectrum, um.
We will. Probably be around five thousand dollars in our end, so we'll go ahead and sign that contract. And uh work with Spectrum to get that started next week. Um, I don't have a huge update on the proposed overall street sidewalk, other than uh they're doing the uh survey location right now. There might be some markings on the road that you'll notice. We'll try to get a public meeting scheduled before Memorial Day. Uh, I'm waiting for the finalized quote from our contractor. Um, he's having some issues because there might be some vegetation removal, so we're waiting on that. And then once we do, we'll schedule a public meeting.
Okay, onsite, right?
On site to meet with everyone and uh kind of go over the plan. Um, which will connect Kensington Parkway, the commercial area of Kensington Parkway to St. Paul Park. Where there's currently no sidewalk.
Okay, good. All right, thank you very much. Um, any questions for Matt on those two topics? Okay. All right, uh, so we're going to move down to ordinances, resolutions and regulations. Um, just so everybody knows, we're pulling number three, which was the U O I. Um, are, we actually approved. Moving uh forward with the contract uh at our last meeting, uh, we were just going to uh go ahead and do the resolution for the um. Our town attorney is still reviewing the contract, so we'll bring that back at the June meeting. But um, we've already approved the expenditure. Okay, so we'll start with number one, Matt.
Thank you. Um, Mary Helsley, before you, this evening is ordinance number O dash zero one dash twenty twenty three in ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington. To appropriate and adopt fiscal year F Y twenty four budget and to levy a tax on certain real and personal property. Under the provisions of the Maryland Tax Property Article of Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. We did not receive any additional public comment, which closed at four P M. This last Friday, uh, the public hearing was held last month on April tenth. Um, so it is before you this evening to adopt F Y twenty four budget and capital improvement plan.
Okay, and we're not taking further comment because you had until uh Friday, May fifth. So we'll just need a um motion.
I move that we adopt. Uh, ordinance number O dash zero one dash twenty twenty three.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, uh, we're going to move down to resolution number two. Uh, I just want to note that uh the former mayor, uh Garrett Park is in the audience, Peter Benjamin. Who um has uh been uh part of um the National Gun Violence Awareness for quite a while, or Moms That Demand Action. And has uh encouraged us last year to um take this on and we're renewing it this year and I think um. After all the goings on in the nation right now. Um, I'm not sure. I think everybody's pretty aware of it, but uh I think it's good to recognize it. So, Matt?
Uh, Mayor Council, before you is resolution number R dash ten dash twenty twenty three. A resolution of the mayor and town council declaring the first Friday in June, Friday, June second, twenty twenty three. Be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town of Kensington to honor and remember all victims and survivors of the gun violence. And to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence.
Okay. Um, Peter, did you want to say anything before we, sorry, just come up to the podium, please?
As the mayor noted, um. Gun violence is a major issue here. As it is through all of the United States. And we in the state of Maryland have the advantage. That we have passed more gun safety. Laws than. Probably any other state except maybe California. We have worked really, really hard to try to keep our state safe. But. There is no way to keep a state safe without all states being safe. And there's a lot of work we still need to do. And it's very important that those places. Here in this state. That can recognize that gun violence is something that we have to stop. And pass resolutions such as the one that you have before you. Uh. If they do that, that helps the process because it gets our legislators. Both state and national. To push even harder. To get the kind of legislation we need to stop. The mass shootings that occur and the individual shootings that occur. And I certainly hope that. This. This town will do the same as it has last year. And say. We want to recognize the second of June. As National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Thank you. Thank you. So we will be meeting on Friday, June second at Flynn Park. To uh like we did last year and we will be reading the resolution there. And then uh orange is the color of the. Of um for the recognition and we will be placing candles in the fountain. For this event, so um if you're available, please come. And uh it's a, it's a relatively short event, but it's an opportunity to um. To talk about. You know, what this country's going through, to talk about any um. You know, the gun violence that maybe you've experienced of a loved one. My brother died of a gun wound, so it's um very personal to me. So I think um if you're available, I hope you can come out. Okay, is there any questions regarding the resolution? No. Um, could we get a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number R ten twenty twenty three. Uh, declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town of Kensington to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, we are, um, we pulled number three, so on the last item on the agenda is public appearances. This is the opportunity to bring anything that is not on the agenda to uh our attention or just to um state. So um. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to come forward? Please do. Yeah. No. Is there anybody on the uh raising their hands on the?
All right.
No. Okay, well, if there's no other item, then we will call a motion to adjourn. Our next meeting will be Monday, June twelfth. Um, Council, do we plan to do that in person or do you want to? Yes, okay. All right, we'll do that in person. And um, the motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
What'd you say?
I moved to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you very much. Be sure to grab a cupcake on your way out so Darren doesn't have to take them home.